Good evening, everyone. I'm calling the meeting of the common council to order. Today is Tuesday, February twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty, and we are in the council chambers of City Hall. Attendance appears as though everyone is here with the exception of the mayor, who is away for the week. At this time, please rise and join me in slithers flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item C, public comment, period. At this time, the council president will recognize members of the public who have indicated their desire to address the council. Upon recognition by the council president, persons may address the council from the podium, first stating their name and address. The council may take action on emergency matters introduced by members of the public. Is there anybody who wishes to address the council? Anybody wishing to address the council? And one third call, anybody for council comments? None, then we'll move on to item D, approval of the minutes from the February eleventh, two thousand and twenty council meeting. We have a motion to approve the minutes. Motion by Mr. Fire, seconded by Mr. Handler, any discussion? If none, then please vote. All right, that motion carries ten to none. Next, we have staff updates. We'll start with the Aquatic Center project update presented by Cast Person.
Good evening. I'm going to take the opportunity over the next few months to kind of update the council and the community on kind of how the progress of the Aquatic Center is going. Obviously, if we have any large donations that come across my desk, I will send out a press release to the council so they're aware of it. But just for fundraising, we're at one point two six million dollars, which is very good. Our goal is still three million dollars. We continue to work over the next few months and throughout the summer on accomplishing that goal. We do have a new contract signed and taken care of with Iconica, same team as was before, but just a new name. So we are about ninety-eight percent done with engineering and architectural services. So if we do get that large donation, we're able to go out to bid rather quickly rather than wait and finalize any architectural or engineering drawings. And we are still working with Marsh Field Utilities on the potential cost sharing with both projects potentially working together, being in such close proximity. So things are still moving along nicely. We still have the active fundraising group that's out in the community. And if you haven't given yet, please consider talking to the foundation or talking to me. I'll entertain any questions that group may have.
Any questions right now for us? All right. Thank you, Justin. Next, we have communications committee update from Mr. Lokes.
Thank you. I'd like to go over ten points, and I'm not going to go through everything. I will provide a document to each one of you after this meeting, and you can look at it and then ask questions since I have about five minutes tonight. So what I want to do is kind of go over the ten items, one important items. Developing a consistent use of our city logo is something that we're working on and will be updated and released with our new city website late spring or early summer, and then followed by the logo place on news releases, agendas, and minutes informed and other items as needed. A new website is in the works. I've been working on it for several months now, looking to have that out late spring, early summer. It will have items such as electronic email notification systems, so anything such as a road closure, rush pickup, garbage delays, agendas, news releases, snow emergencies, things like ordinance changes, we can have that, and people can opt in to see if they would want that notice sent to them via email. We're also working on a tech system as well with that. We also have a multimedia page that has agendas, minutes, packets, and videos similar to like Gramacus was, and that will be available on our on our new web platform. There are other items that you can read later on here that are included in the new city website. Talking about the Marshfield Media Access Platform, we're going to be hosting a meet and greet at Scotty's Pizza, March fifteenth. It's a Sunday from one to four. So anybody watching or anybody out here, we encourage you to come, get to know us. It's a way to get to meet new independent producers and get new people involved in in programming for Marshfield Media Access. Currently, just to give you a little heads up, we have eighteen independent producers. Those are people like our church programs that give us programs to run on the air. We have ten different partners we work with, which are similar to like Mackey, Main Street, Marshfield, Marshfield Made New. We have contributors, which are basically our volunteers, people like Don Neistrom and stuff like that that do hosting. So that kind of gives you an idea, and we hope to increase those numbers by having a meet and greet and getting out within the community as well. I do a weekly newsletter as well. You can see those weekly, sign up for them, I believe you guys are, and you get information weekly, and also it is on our video platform as well. So there's more than just a newsletter, that stuff is put out via video. I'm also developing a new monthly communications newsletter that's internal, that has stuff for HR information, signup forms, materials that are really for internal use, new employees, retirements, general, a one-stop shop. We'll still continue sending emails, but a way for people here as well as elected officials to easily get to. We were working on communications plan, but that's really a big piece, big development. It's taken quite some time. Right now, the document is almost fifteen pages. We're doing that with a city administrator as well as some other department individuals. Hopefully, get that wrapped up here in the next month or two. It's really a guide to reach out to other departments, to help reach more residents, getting more information out the public via various different platforms. It's really important that we have a two-way communication process with residents and staff. And that's mentioned in our agenda management is one thing we're looking at, too, which would help in these meetings, a way to connect easier, a way for easier for you guys to take notes on on your computers with a pen, write onto the agenda, all electronic. Text MyGov is another way we're looking at things at as well, a texting service that you get instant gratification. So when you want to know something you don't know, you could actually text it, and the answer will come out right away. It's no human interaction at that point. The human interaction is how we put information in. So what we put in is very important, so you can do a lot of things, and there's a lot of ways to really connect with with citizens that may need to get that information right away and not wait to call or if we're close. Number seven, just working on regards to video production, our YouTube page is growing, our Facebook page is growing, and this is Marshfield Media Access Platform. We do have two of them, one for city, one for Marshfield Media Access. Real quickly, watch time is one hundred and sixty-four hours so far in this year, two thousand four hundred and ninety-eight views. That's already going to top twenty nineteen. I didn't put twenty nineteen's here. Top leaders, church basement ladies, a PSA experience Marshfield, we did with Krabby Dave's, our press conferences we do after these meetings on Thursdays, the cabin fever event that's coming in a writer's corner. So that just gives you an idea, those are some top leaders in our analytics, so we do watch that to know where we're at. Number eight, working on online workflow system, we use that, was free, and has really helped us with keeping on task and staying efficient between myself, the communication specialist, as well as all our contributors and our volunteers have access to it, so it's our workflow system. Marketing efforts, we're working with Justin and the pool committee, doing videos, updating the recognition ops, working on digital signage of having stuff out in the community on their signs, website updates, news releases, and radio PSAs. And just number ten, it's reaching, it's most important that we are, you're going to use new tools and look at new tools to effectively communicate out to residents. So we'll currently use our current tools, which we do use quite a bit, which is Facebook, Twitter, or excuse me, Facebook, YouTube, as well as our cable television. But we are looking at new ways like texting. So the other thing is just we want to engage the public in our platform, Marshfield Media Access. It's really important, it is a platform of which we manage through the communications department. Any questions?
Thank you. We do have a question from Mr. Druckek.
Again, sorry. Thank you for this update. I had asked for this coming out of the minutes from in earlier meeting that you were updating things, and I think it's important for you to to continue to update councils. I appreciate that. One question, we had a long discussion earlier this year or last year on Facebook Live and that interaction. Is there is there much interaction coming during a council meeting at all, or is are you happy with this?
Yeah, it's really been very beneficial. We could get up to fifteen to twenty viewers, maybe even right now, depends on the subject that's here. As in commenting, Facebook doesn't allow to disable, but we can hide those comments during the meeting, and that's so we don't delete them, we do hide them, because that's something you guys requested, so no commenting could happen. So that's monitored in the back right now, so we have our computer up to see if any kind of comment can come in. We would hide those at this during the meeting because of your request, not deleting them because they are captured. But very happy with with the Facebook Live. It's also on the city website right now, so it's embedded, and people can actually go there and click there if they don't have a Facebook account, so anybody can watch it.
Follow up, if I may, just to, is there a process with which you can share with us some of those comments, or are those comments not something you deem that would be beneficial to us? Because I personally haven't heard of any comments coming to us during a meeting, and I thought we had discussed about that, about you sharing some of those with us, and I can't remember how we left that.
You know, I guess that's a decision of this body and what they want to do. Those comments are available, we can search them through our archive social. Everything is captured instantaneously, so we could provide anything, I guess, to you. That would be something I could ask IT on the capture of that if the public doesn't have it or it got deleted by the public, because they can't delete their own comment technically, but it's captured in our system no matter what. So if that's something you want, then I guess come to come see me, and we can definitely discuss.
Thank you.
Okay.
To follow up on that comment thing, I believe it was mentioned that the communication team would be looking if there were question comments that came in, potentially answer those, have any of those types of comments come in, or is it just?
They come in on the direct message system rather than right on the platform itself for everybody to see, so through messaging, those are answered right away. I do get an alert, I will look into department heads first before I would answer them unless I totally hundred percent know the answer, but I will get that. And so at times, like Dan would have Chris from street answer that to give me an answer, and then I could provide that from his perspective, written by Chris. So it has that voice coming from the department head, which is kind of, which I think is good.
So you are getting comments through Facebook Messenger, then?
Yeah, yes, we definitely are. One thing that hasn't been addressed, and I think it will in our social media policies, would be if there is questions or answers that need to be in general comments, how is that perceived? Those are things that are happening on other pages, not really the city's page, but other pages within departments. I think that'll be looked at and how those are answered or are they answered? And I can't speak for those pages, but within our city, I am monitoring those, and we'll get back to the person if if really needed, and really clarification's important.
Yeah, just thank you, nice job on your presentation, Tom, and just to add again, Tom has more statistics and subpoints and some other information on his outline that I asked him to curb tonight in the interest of time, but we will get that out to you in the next day or so by email, so you can see the full extent of what the report is so far from that community.
I also want to comment that the newsletter is appreciated. I happened to just notice that all the election dates were at the top, one of the more recent newsletters, and I was able to add those to my personal calendar, because we have, what, five election dates total this year, one already done, but appreciate that kind of information in the newsletter.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, if none, then we'll move on to letter F, mayor's comments. I think we'll move beyond that one and go on to letter G, council comments. I'm going to start this off, a couple of things I want to mention. This weekend is a busy weekend, a lot of things happening in town. There's a cabin fever fest, I believe this is the first annual cabin fever fest, and that's at Wenzel Family Plaza Saturday from eleven to four. It actually is kicking off at eight forty-five in the morning with a two or five mile walk or run, so that's happening outdoors. And then also, the Marshfield Cultural Fair is having their annual event happening at what is now known as the Marshfield Campus of UWSP. Some of you may know it as the Wood, and you happened to go there some thirty years ago, you'd notice as the UW Center. But anyway, that's happening, that's starting at ten AM until four PM. That includes booths of various types, there's entertainment, and then my favorite part is the food court, where you get to sample lots of different kinds of foods. So again, lots of events happening this weekend, should be no reason for any So again, lots of events happening this weekend. Should be no reason for any, anybody in the public to be bored. Lot of things to do. Any other comments from council members? All right, then we'll move on to reports from commissions, boards and committees. And I've been told that this doesn't have to just be council members that are on those commissions, boards or committees. If we have anybody else who's on a commission board or committee wants to give an update, that's available. So anybody would like to give a update on commissions, boards or committees? Wow, talkative group. All right, let's move on. Letter I is the consent agenda. Before we take action, are there any concerns by any items on the consent agenda? Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Council President. I do have one concern and I'd like to pull the minutes from the city plan commission meeting on February eighteenth. So I'd like to pull that. Thank you.
So letter K on the consent agenda, Plan Commission, February eighteenth, twenty twenty. Any other comments or concerns? Otherwise, we will entertain a motion to receive and place on file approving any recommended actions. No other comments. All right, I have a motion from Mr. Budke, seconded by Mr. Fire. Any discussion on the motion? No discussion? Please vote. That motion passes ten to zero. All right, letter J, items removed. So the Plan Commission minutes from February eighteenth. Mr. Fisher?
Thank you again. So I was at that meeting because at that meeting there was discussion about changing the ordinance, referring to Airbnbs. And I was surprised, there was a motion in a second, but then the vote without any discussion, the motion failed. And I feel very strongly about this issue because from my understanding, from talking to staff, our ordinance is not in compliance with state statute. So first and foremost, I believe that to be true, but if I could, without any objection, I'd like Josh to come up or somebody and let me know if I'm right or wrong.
Yeah, a while back, the statutes were changed to require municipalities to allow Airbnbs for a period of basically seven to twenty-nine days. What the statute did allow is municipalities to regulate seven days or less. And right now our ordinance basically limits it to commercial districts as conditional use, as a conditional use permit. So they're not allowed by right and we don't regulate the duration as we would be allowed by statute. So yeah, there's not consistency with the statute right now and we need to correct that at some point. And that was brought before the Plan Commission. And how we looked at divvying up the ordinances is looking at just the land use in the zoning code and how we would adopt that and change that from, I think it's called a tourist house right now. We were proposing to change that to short term rental as a term and then allowing that in residential uses. And then putting the regulations as a licensing and in licensing chapter with the clerks. And that was what the proposal was and that didn't get approved. And so we still have to correct the ordinance on some level.
If I may follow up, I guess I would like to make a motion to have staff prepare an ordinance for the common, for the common council's consideration. But first, having the city plan commission give some recommendations on this so we can get their feedback. But I do feel strongly that this needs to come before the common council. We need, in my opinion, to clean this up and make sure our ordinance is compliant with state statute. So I would like to make that motion. Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion to bring this back to council for discussion and decision with first referring to Plan Commission, which I believe they meet once a month. So we'd be looking at having this occur probably in four weeks on the council level. So motion to bring it to the council as an agenda item in four weeks then, after having information provided by the Plan Commission. Motion is made by Mr. Fisher, seconded by Mr. McSwain. Any discussion on this? No discussion? Please vote. That motion passes ten to zero. All right, still on letter J, we still need to approve those minutes that were pulled from that consent agenda. So the minutes as a record of what occurred at the meeting. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes? Motion by Mr. Fisher, seconded by Mr. Handler. Any discussion? No discussion? Please vote. And that motion passes ten to zero. On to letter K, we have the first reading of ordinance number fourteen twenty-seven, a request by Dean Schiller to rezone property located at nine oh nine West Adler Road. This is parcel thirty-three dash zero three three zero seven B from SR four, single family residential to TR six, two family residential. This is presented by Bryce Hembrook, City Planner.
Thank you, Council President. So the applicant is requesting to rezone his property from SR four, single family residential to TR six, two family residential. The applicant is planning to build a duplex on the property. According to the future land use map, this subject property is located in the medium density, single family residential district. And a duplex is one of the recommended land uses in this, this district. To the west and to the east are properties consist of single family and two family residences. To the north is the city owned trail, the Wildwood Station Trail. To the south, there are properties that are zoned SR two and SR three, which are single family residences. So overall, this rezoning request would be consistent with our comprehensive plan and would be consistent with the surrounding neighborhood land uses. The subject property will meet all lot width, size and setback requirements in the TR six zoning district. And so overall, the property is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the Plan Commission reviewed and approved the recommendation at the February Plan Commission meeting. This is the first reading, unless there's no further action being requested at this time. The final reading is scheduled for March tenth. Thank you.
Okay, so as was mentioned, there will be no action on this item at today's meeting. This will come back to council on March tenth. But are there any questions? Mr. Budke?
Bryce, so why wasn't it zoned initially for two family? And the other question would be, do we have, we must have that in other areas in the city though where single family in this area, if you could answer?
Correct. As for the exact reason why it wasn't zoned TR six right away, I'm not, I'm not too sure. I think pre-two thousand thirteen zoning code, it may have been allowed, duplex may have been allowed. There are duplexes, there's a duplex of property away that's owned TR six. So it's not like it's gonna be a standalone zoning district. And then what was your second part of the question?
I, I think you answered it. So it's not uncommon.
Mr. Druckeck?
Bryce, have we seen a layout, a site plan, like how this building is going to be placed on, on this property?
We have not. It wasn't one of the requirements for this. However, I believe it's gonna be a side by side duplex and probably just your traditional duplex, I suppose. But yeah, we have not seen any, any plans specifically for the site.
Because it is a long and narrow lot and the other buildings nearby are smaller, very traditional houses. Be interesting to see how, how the applicant is proposing putting on a duplex on such a narrow lot and how consistent that's gonna be with the neighbors. That would be my, my, my concern is how that building, now a duplex is gonna relate to these buildings.
Okay. Yeah, so we haven't quite seen the site plan. However, when they build a new duplex, they would be held to the setback requirements. And there's certain, so the minimum lot width is actually larger for a duplex than a single family. So the, the whole intent is to have those requirements kind of kind of resolve that issue of being too close to the neighbors and whatnot. But, but yeah, we can certainly look with, you know, talk with him about a site plan prior to the next meeting.
Bryce, just for clarification on the map you said, it appears that there are two duplexes, three hoses to the east of this property and they fit on fairly narrow properties as well? Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, then we'll move on to letter L. First reading of ordinance number fourteen twenty-eight, request by the Unified School District of Marshfield to adopt a five year campus master plan, the Marshfield Middle School that describes the existing conditions and the future planned developments. This is located at nine hundred and at ten ten East Fourth Street, parcel three three dash zero zero one eight six and the vacant parcel on East Eighth Street, parcel thirty-three dash zero zero one eight nine. This is also presented by Bryce Hembrook, City Planner.
Thank you, Council President. So the school district is requesting review and approval of their five year campus master plan. This plan includes an inventory of existing facility, facilities and uses and shows future development and future projects over the next five years. So one of the recommendations in the comprehensive plan was for the school district and other, you know, large campuses to kind of create these plans to show kind of how they plan on growing over the next, you know, couple of years. The school district has created one for the high school in Madison Elementary. Overall, there are no major projects being proposed at this time. And the, the campus master plan is broken, broken up into three primary sections, which is required by our zoning code. The three sections include introduction, existing site analysis and future use analysis. So the future use analysis highlights the, the potential projects over the next five years. The projects that are listed can be administratively approved if the campus master plan is approved. And and also in the future uses analysis, the proposed land uses and bulk density requirements for the district are established. So those are all in your campus master plan. So as most of us are familiar, this is the location of the Marshfield Middle School located off of East Fourth Street and also East Eighth Street. So the campus includes the middle school as well as the district, school district office. And then as one of the requirements in the zoning code, they have to split into central and peripheral districts. The central district is where you'll see the, all the buildings essentially in the grandstand. The peripheral districts are mainly just grass and then also the driveway for the loop. So I'll just quickly go over some of the possible future projects that they'll be working on over the next couple of years include track and field reconstruction, regrading the interior of the track to better facilitate drainage and playability, replacement of the storage shed next to the existing concession stand. They also plan to make improvements to the tennis pavilion, develop a safer parent pickup, drop off, drive loop, regrade the existing east practice field and remove all the west grandstand. And quickly, I'll just kind of go over proposed parking. So on the map, it's show, or on the screen, it shows the existing parking. And then there is also some grass parking that they added as a, on the map showing where cars can park if there's ever a need for additional parking. There are a hundred and forty-four existing parking spaces located in the campus district and this does not include the street parking. Most of the parking can be found in between the, the district office and the middle school. And according to the zoning code, the school and district office require fifty-nine parking spaces. None of the projects being proposed would trigger a parking requirement, but I thought that would be important to note. So overall, this is the campus master plan, basically just the overview of what they have on their site and what they plan on working on over the next couple of years. So. The Plan Commission reviewed this request at the February Plan Commission meeting, recommended approval of the request. However, this is the first reading and thus no action is required. Final reading will be on March tenth. We do have representatives from the school district in case there are any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Bryce. Mr. Budke?
Yeah, I'm very pleased with the loop that, you know, that was one of the concerns. School board listened to us and, and the staff. And I just wanted to point out for the council, I read in there that the meetings that they offered to the residents in that area to attend, I believe nobody showed up. So take that into consideration as well. I, I think it's a good plan.
All right, any other questions? All right, again, this was a first reading, so there will be no action. This will be again on our agenda for March tenth for action at that time. All right, letter M, request to approve budget resolution number zero two dash two zero two zero, transferring fifteen thousand dollars within the Economic Development Fund from fund balance applied to contribution for the purpose of making an incentive payment related to a development project located in Tiff District number seven. This is presented by Josh Miller, Development Services Director.
Thank you. Yeah, if you recall, last November, we were here to talk about whether the council was interested in providing a partial payment, an incentive payment for the Quality Tank Solutions project that got started late last year. Typically, what the incentive payments are, are they broken down into different percentages based on how much the project is completed? And typically a footing and foundation portion is about twenty percent of the incentive. When we look at what the total incentive package, what could have been had they met their deadline, we'd be looking at about a fifteen thousand dollar payment. So that's where the fifteen thousand dollar number comes from. When we went through this process back in November, we identified that the, the, um, the payment was not Tiff eligible. And so we were looking for a source of funding to provide that kind of as a good faith offering for them completing the work. And so the direction was to go to the Economic Development Board, which we did. Economic Development Board was supportive of providing the fifteen thousand dollars out of their two oh five fund. And that's why we're here tonight is to request a budget resolution to transfer that from their fund balance to, to an account where they could distribute those funds to, as an incentive. This was reviewed by the Finance Budget Personnel Committee last week, which they did vote in favor of. The two conditions though that would come with this that were discussed back in November would be the project would have to be completed in twenty twenty, by the end of the year in twenty twenty. And we'd have to make the payment before the end of the year in twenty twenty. We don't want to carry this forward in future years. So with that, staff would recommend approval of the proposed budget resolution zero two dash twenty twenty.
All right, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Budke, what is your motion? What is your motion? All right, motion to approve by Mr. Budke, seconded by Mr. Handler. Any discussion? All right, no discussion? Please vote. Oh, wait, sorry, caught that last second there.
I did, I did hit it at the last second. Sorry about that. Um, Josh, is this the last incentive payment then for this development?
Uh, this is the, yeah, I mean, more than likely, this, this would be the last one because we're out of the, the fifth district expenditure period.
Okay, and, and this was, they were originally requesting seventy-five or eighty?
Yeah, the developer obviously would like to the full payment. They've requested that. And going through the process, we, to find the funds to provide that funding would be a challenge at this time. So the EDB was willing to pay for the fifteen thousand dollars at this point.
And if I'm to understand you correctly, the, the reason is, is because they didn't make the deadline?
Right.
If they had made the deadline, we would have made the full incentive payment.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, was there any other question, comments? All right, then go ahead and vote please. That passes ten to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up we have letter N, consider, recommend, sorry, request to consider petition of annexation of territory owned by Macau LLC in the city of Marshfield. Territory in question, which includes portions of the adjacent right of way is located within the town of McMillan, north of State Highway ninety-seven and east of the Hamas Nature Preserve. Council is being asked to set the application fee. This is presented by Josh Miller, Development Services Director.
Thank you. And this is really a two part request. The first request is to set the application fee. Our initial, typically what the city does is we're obligated to pay five years of lost taxes of the town's portion of those taxes. The property is assessed at around a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. And so that annual payment is about four hundred and seventy-five dollars that would go directly to the town. Usually our annexation fee that we collect for property that has an improvement on it is the five years of lost taxes. And, and we, we have, there's room to negotiate with that because obviously annexing the property into the city is a benefit. There's potential economic roles in this location. And so that's definitely a, a benefit. But the total cost that we will be paying the town is about twenty, twenty-three hundred and seventy-seven. and seventy-seven dollars, give or take. And that's based on current estimates from the township. So that number shouldn't, shouldn't change too much. The applicant is requesting a reduction of that or waiving the fee essentially. Staff looked at this request and is bringing it to the, to the council for review. Typically, what the, the annexation policy in the city, it's seven point three one zero requires that if, if the annexed property is strictly vacant land, which most of this is, this is mostly farmland, there's one small house on, on the property. If it's vacant land, the maximum annexation fee would be eight hundred dollars. And the reason for that is, is usually it, it doesn't exceed that very often because it's just usually, it's often farmland and vacant. The reason that we request additional annexation fees for improved land is because the land's more valuable and we have to pay a higher percentage or higher tax rate, not rate, dollar amount to the township for those tax, those lost taxes. So staff is countering, basically recommending an eight hundred dollar fee for the annexation fee instead of waiving it altogether. And so I wanted to present that to you because the applicant is requesting waiving it. They did submit a letter, which I included in the packet, but I'll, I won't read tonight, but it is in your packet. The, the second request is to refer this to the Plan Commission to review and decide on zoning. The applicant is not requesting permanent zoning. They're requesting RH thirty-five, which is our rural holding district zoning. Basically, it's our agricultural district, and that's simply because there isn't a, a plan yet on how to develop this property. According to the comprehensive plan, the area along Highway ninety-seven would most likely be commercial. The area to the back, to the north and west would most likely be a, a mixed neighborhood residential, which would be kind of, you know, single family and two-family and, and mix, mixed use of residential. So that plan is not in place. We don't know where those boundaries would be yet, so we're not, we're not requesting permanent zoning of, of commercial and residential yet because we don't have a survey and we don't have a plan. So right now, we'd be referring to Plan Commission to recommend a, a permanent zoning for the annexation ordinance after they reviewed it. That'll be a part of a public hearing process. So with that, staff is recommending an annexation fee of eight hundred dollars and asking that you direct staff to refer this to Plan Commission.
All right, we'll handle these as two separate items. First, we'll start with the referral to the Plan Commission for annexation, so they can review, make recommendations, and determine zoning classification. So I would entertain a motion to refer this to the Plan Commission first. Is that your motion, Mr. Fire? Yes, seconded by Mr. Handler. Mr. Budke, you have a question?
Yes, I do. Josh, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with that. It sounds, who is, who is the Macau? Do we know who that is?
Uh, the Reiner family.
I, you know, it, it sounds to me like somebody is trying to make a bunch of money to, to get that annexed, and, and they don't have plans for what they're going to do with that yet, do they? Or did they have some idea?
Well, they, they have plans, I think, to, to find a developer to develop the property, but that hasn't been conveyed to the city yet. We, we don't know exactly that they've done that yet. I don't think they have, but I, I can't say a hundred percent that that hasn't happened.
So with that thought, would we be better off to do the regular fee that we do? And then when it's developed, could we then give a refund or something? Because I just don't want somebody to sit on land and be able to make a bunch of money and, and yet we're giving them a deal on that.
Let's discuss the fee after we pass this, referring to the Planning Commission. We'll talk about the fee as a separate item.
Okay, I, I had my button pushed before we made the motion, whatever you, whatever you want.
We'll, we'll start with the first motion. Is there any question on sending this to the Planning Commission? All right, so we're voting on a motion to send this to the Planning Commission. That passes ten to zero. Now, let's talk about the annexation fee, and this is what Mr. Budke is talking about. So I would entertain a motion so we can begin discussing. Motion by Mr. Jock Heck, seconded by Mr. Patel. I'm assuming the eight hundred dollar recommendation. Is that your motion? Yes. All right, now discussion, Mr. Budke.
I guess I would ask Josh what you think about doing that. I, I mean, because we're, we're giving a much lower fee to them.
Yeah, and, and I certainly understand where you're coming from, and I think, you know, there, there is a, there's definitely a value, though, to having this land in the city, even if it is, isn't necessarily developed right away or a plan for development. So I think, you know, the, the policy does say that we can negotiate. So there's obviously room intended to, to negotiate some of that. We are, would be, I forget what the total dollar, I think it was like fifteen hundred dollars that the city would have to make up or sixteen hundred dollars to make up that difference. So that is a cost that the city would have to bear upfront, you know, to, for that. I mean, it's over the course of five years, typically we pay it upfront. But I, I, I don't have a problem with reducing it, you know, because I do see that there's a, a strong economic value, value to having that land in the city.
Mr. McSwain?
Okay, so just to see if we've got this straight, there's, there's a five-year equivalency of property tax payment that's made to the town that the land is going away from.
Correct.
And we pay that, the city pays that?
Yeah, by statute, the city is obligated to pay five years of lost taxes to the town. Now, it's up to us on how, if we want to, are able to recoup some of that money from an application fee, and that's basically what we're here to talk about.
Okay, so that's state law that says we have to compensate. So generally, what's happened is that people have paid that as part of the application fee, so that we are out no real money that way.
Right, yeah.
Okay, how of, how often is it that we take a reduced fee?
Probably, I don't, I don't know if we've done it since my time here, but we also haven't annexed a whole lot of property either. So I, I guess I don't have an answer as far as when, when, what, how often we've actually done, done a reduced fee, I'm not sure.
Yeah, in my review, and then talking with Josh, here's my thought, two things. First of all, you know, if they had something really imminent plan for development, that would be one thing, because clearly we want to get tax-based. And if someone is saying, look, we'd like to annex if you can work with us, and we've got so-and-so willing to build, you're going to get a lot of tax value. That'd be beneficial, that might be a reason for us to reduce the, the annexation fee. But the other reason would be based upon the taxes we're going to recoup. We're going to kind of check to roughly, for roughly twenty-four hundred dollars to the town of, of McMillan. And right now, what the applicant is asking for, since they have no immediate development plans, is a, a rural holding zoning, which is effectively kind of like an ag zoning. It's going to be the lowest level evaluation. So not only are we going to pay twenty-four hundred to the town, the amount of taxes we're going to get is going to be based on a lower value since there's not going to be a development plan to occur, and the zoning is going to reflect that. So this is nothing against the applicant. If I were the applicant, I would probably make the same request. But there's going to be a disparity between the amount we recover from tax payment from this property owner and the amount that we pay to the town. And so I think going below eight hundred dollars in annexation fee is probably not warranted. We hope that they do develop. We hope that they come along in the next three, four, or five years and, and get a project out there. But for the time being, it seems like going to the value of vacant land is probably the, the best way to do this.
Josh, just a real quick question. I'm assuming, without knowing what it would be zoned, and as Mr. Bart mentioned, it'll probably be zoned at fairly low-level tax rate, but will the taxes that we gain back in the next five years compensate whatever money we've been paying for that five-year make-whole payment we'd have to make on the building?
Um, good question. I think, I think it probably would, yeah, especially because the city's tax rate is actually higher than the township. We're at, what, nine point four eight?
Right around nine-five, and they're probably half that.
They're probably about half that. So we, I mean, we would make it up, and there's really, if the house stays vacant or is under, unutilized and not, there's no services, really not providing much to that property in the way of services, so.
Okay, so it really is an investment. And it, just, I'm looking at the map again, we do have some right-of-way accessing on that property that well and.
Yeah, we've, we've included in the legal description, the south or the north half of Highway ninety-seven along the property, because there's actually carved-out residents that's not included in this annexation request, that's not part of this property. But we would get half of the right-of-way that's part of the, would be part of the city limits then, which makes it easier to annex the other side of the street if that were to happen. I don't think the jurisdiction changes at all as far as our, our responsibility, but that would still be the state highway.
Yeah, we'll actually be keeping as part of this, too, uneasement to an existing well that, that we need to maintain. So I get, like I said, I get the applicant's rationale, and, and it makes some sense. I, I just feel that eight hundred dollars is a good compromise between the twenty-four hundred dollar check that we're going to write to the town of McMillan and zero. I think it represents the fact that they are getting a benefit, they have no imminent development plans that will increase the value of that property. It seemed like a good place from a staff perspective to rest.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, without further discussion, please vote. That motion carries ten to zero.
Thank you.
All right. Item O, request to approve the proposed five-year financial, financial management plan presented by Steve Barks, City Administrator.
Thank you. On February eleventh at our last meeting, Dave Ferris from Ellers came and, and made a nice presentation to us about a proposed five-year financial plan. And again, just a reminder that this is something we've been looking forward to for a long time, a document that will help us tie together the CIP, the budget, debt planning, fund maintenance, all those kinds of things into one document that can help us. And it's not like the, the budget is a hard document that says, you know, we say that for twenty twenty, this is how we're going to spend the money unless we do a budget resolution. This is more of a, of a blueprint or a framework that says, this is where we're going and this is how we want to get there. So it's a significant document for us. It's something that we intend to use if you approve it. In all decisions going farther, we intend to update it every year, reflect new conditions to make sure that when we talk about how much we can afford to borrow and how we're going to pull together a budget that fits with where we are and what we need to do, that is current, is based on relevant information. So what we're asking you to do tonight is to approve this as our planning document, as our five-year financial comprehensive plan that we will use on a weekly basis as we go forward with some of the financial challenges that we face.
All right, we have a motion to approve the five-year financial management plan by Mr. Jock Heck, seconded by Mr. Handler. Need discussion? Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Council President. I just have one question. I heard two weeks ago, you know, during the presentation, there was a comment made about needing additional revenue, and the presenter brought up an example of a wheel tax. I'm just curious, when will discussions be had on possible other revenue streams coming about? I mean, at what point is that? I mean, I, I sensed that's part of the plan. When is that going to come? Thank you.
Well, a couple of things. First of all, yeah, and I appreciate that Dave brought it up that night. He did talk about it earlier that same day with some staff members, including myself, because the gap in the issue we're facing right now is of some significance. So it, it may not be something we can overcome with simply revenue or with expense cuts alone. Revenue enhancement may be part of the issue. There's nothing in particular on the docket right now. The staff is not talking specifically about wheel tax or street lighting, you know, utility or anything like that. But I think we'd be ill-advised not to look at those things. What I will pledge to you is that we won't suddenly throw this in at the last minute as part of some budget proposal where you feel like there's a gun put to your head, that in order to make the twenty twenty-one budget work, you better do these things. We'll definitely look at them in, in this, you know, the spring and into the early summer and bring forward something if, in fact, we are going to propose that. At this moment, we don't have anything planned, as I said, but, you know, I, I wouldn't rule it out. And there may be some other creative thoughts that we, we look at that, I know what you're thinking, all these things equate to taxes. Not all of them do necessarily, but they're on the revenue side of the equation.
Sure, and I would just add to that, you know, we're looking at the expense side and trying to do some forecasting, too. Josh and I just went to the Ellers Public Financing Conference, and they covered just about every alternative revenue option that anyone in the state is considering. Some of them don't, a lot of them don't apply to us. So I think once we get down to it, there may be just a couple of options, but we're really looking at the expense side. So we'll definitely be ready soon.
Just one more follow-up, if I may. You know, and during these discussions with staff, what were some of the things mentioned? I mean, I heard wheel tax, but are there, were there any other?
Also, it was mentioned the idea of, you know, you probably heard us talk before, I think it came up before I was here, a stormwater utility. The idea was rejected. That's based on the fact that, you know, you look at the amount of impervious surface that, that all property owners have and, and pay into the stormwater system. But along the lines of a utility, you know, there might be a street lighting utility as a way to cover the costs of, of street lighting in the community. There's also some other ideas that are out there that might be things that we have currently on the tax roll that could be paid for and funded in another way, apart from the general fund. And believe me, you know, these may sound to you right now like a shell game or some kind of a, a tax that's, that's treated as if it's not. That's not really the case. Some of these are costs that we currently face that we're looking at how to handle them in a way that would give some relief on the taxing, on the right track.
Yeah, correct. We're probably, I, I'm glad you're asking now, and we'll get it in front of you as soon as we can, but it's those kinds of things. Some have been brought to the council before. Some of the things that they've mentioned at the, just for, for instance, they talked about naming rights, you know, obviously doesn't apply to us, street water, stormwater utilities, wheel tax, and just, just a laundry list of those things. But we'll put a little more, a little more detail around it and then bring it back to the council.
And again, let me just say one more thing. I see there's other people wanting to speak. Staff is sensitive to the fact that, you know, when you use phrases like revenue enhancement or all these kinds of things, you know, people hear that and they think it's just another tax. And so, I mean, we're, we're not going to, whatever we bring forward to you for consideration, we're not going to pretend it's something other than it is. We're going to just suggest that in part of filling the gap, we want, here's an idea we think you might want to think about and consider in order to make the next budget and future budgets work better. But it's always going to be in conjunction with expects, expenditure cuts. That's going to be, you know, obviously at, at the heart of what we're trying to accomplish here in terms of balancing future budgets.
Mr. Budke?
I hope everybody's read the municipality magazine. They talk about wheel tax, and there are a number of cities that, there's quite a list already. As, as I was named Wheel Tax Tommy over the years, but it is one of the fairer things, people that Marathon County's got it, I believe it. But people that drive automobiles are the ones paying for it. Those are the ones using the roads. And it's getting harder and harder when Dan does the CIP with projects, costs keep going up, and so we have to find something to offset that and, and get done. Costs are going to just keep going up, and you're not going to be able to get as much done. We're already cutting back on the, on some of the big road projects. We're doing more overlays and stuff, and that's fine for a short term, but we're going to have to address it some way or the other. So I appreciate what you said, Steve.
Thank you, Council President. Appreciate it. I am really pleased that we have a plan in place now. For many years, I wondered about that under the Finance Director. We finally have a tool that we utilize, planning for the present and the future, and I thank you for taking that initiative. Thank you.
Mr. McSwain?
Just to point out that a wheel tax is a regressive tax. It takes more from people that make less because it's the same amount regardless of what, what you're driving. And many of these people have multiple vehicles because there's multiple people in the family
All right.
Yeah, no, I don't want to, I don't want to address that question. I just want to say one last time to tie this together and wrap it up with a ribbon and bow that, you know, what I'm really saying for tonight and answer your question, Adam, is that we're facing a structural budget deficit, and we would be ill-advised to go into this without thinking that we're looking at all parts of the equation. And that's going to include, obviously, the expense side, but we should look at revenue ideas as well, and we'll make sure that we bring something forward. We'll give it to you in plenty of time to, to give it a full and thorough review prior to, to the twenty twenty-one budget.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please vote. That motion passes ten to zero. Item P, appointment of Pete Lotzer of twelve oh nine East Twenty-Fifth Street to the Communications Committee, presented by Steve Bard, City Administrator.
Thank you. We talked about the Communications Committee earlier. We got a report from Tom Locks, our Communications Director. There is a vacancy on that five-member body. We presented this to you for consideration on February twelfth, appointing Pete Lotzer, as you mentioned, of twelve oh nine East Twenty-Fifth, to, to join that group, and staff would recommend approval.
All right, I see a motion by Mr. Fisher, seconded by Mr. Budke. I'm assuming to approve that appointment. Any discussion? If no discussion, please vote. That passes ten to zero. Item Q, adjourn the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statutes, Chapter nineteen dot eight five, Section One, Subsection G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning